I'm Sarah M.
Coach Shane Fortenberry, thank you guys for congratulations and we're gonna let you say congratulations to our board. If you are a family member of one of these young ladies, please stand up as we honor you. We know that our parents invest a lot of time when their girls are playing, so we juggle them around, so we appreciate it.
Thank you ladies. Alright, board members, we're gonna ask you to go back and sit down and we're gonna do our Superior Spotlight. So tonight, I get the honor of announcing our Superior Spotlight tonight. We've got a great group of members from East Forsyth High School who is gonna talk about the work that they've been doing this year. So I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Good evening, I'm Jill McKee, Assistant Principal, who supports most closely our counseling team and student support services at East Forsyth High School. September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Tonight, members of the East Forsyth High School Counseling Team and two of our student leaders are going to talk with you and share information about our suicide prevention and awareness programs at East. So during September, our counselors, school social worker, and student advocacy specialist develop prevention and awareness activities along with our students to teach our East students and community that it's okay to talk about mental health. We're committed to connecting our students, our community, our staff, to mental health resources and collaborating to teach them how to seek help for themselves or for a friend. Tonight, we will spotlight our Sources of Strength program, our Be the Light event and race, and our Signs of Suicide program.
Good evening, I'm Josh Owens, I'm the Lead Counselor at East. The Forsyth County Schools' vision is safe, connected, thriving community for all. The East vision is a connected, collaborative, and caring culture for all. A Forsyth County belief is all students and staff must be connected and supported. One of our strategic goals is to expand access to mental health resources and strategies. Our Forsyth County Schools' strategic plan and our Schools' Improvement Plan align and overlap in many ways. So we believe that addressing mental health needs is a foundational step in creating a safe, connected, and thriving community where students strive for personal growth. So, a little bit of data for you, from the CDC indicates that there's a continued increase in mental health challenges for students. Some of the latest data that we were able to find, one in five teenagers in the US had experienced episodes of major depression at some point between 2013 and 2018. Also, suicide rates among people ages 10 to 24 increased by 57% between 2007 and 2018. Local data from our Signs of Suicide, from our school community indicates many students are working through these challenges as we speak. Last week, as part of our Suicide Month, Suicide Prevention Month, we met and talked about signs of suicide with our freshmen. We'll talk about that in more detail later in the presentation. But, from our SOS program, which we call it, 10.5% of ninth graders identified as likely for having depression, which is linked to suicide based on the B-SAD Adolescent Depression Screener, which was up a little bit from last year, in our first year, from 9.9%. So, from this, we have supports in place and we're able to refer these students to get support. Resulted in eight counseling referrals mainly to our community school partner, which we'll talk more about, Family Ties.
Hi, my name's Jessie Dawson, I'm a junior here at East Forsyth High School. As a part of Suicide Prevention Week and Month, we have hosted a Sources of Strength campaign to help teach East Forsyth students, staff, and community about strengths they have in their lives. Sources of Strength is a preventative mindset that is led through peer leaders and supported by adult advisors. As a school, we are encouraged to find and rely on strengths that can help us in our everyday lives, especially when we feel the big emotions of sadness, depression, anger, and anxiety. These strengths includes family support, positive friends, mentors, healthy activities, generosity, spirituality, physical health, and mental health. The Sources of Strength mission is to provide the highest quality of evidence-based prevention for suicide, violence, bullying, and substance abuse by training, supporting, and empowering both peer leaders and caring adults to impact their world through the power of connection, hope, help, and strength. During the first week of September at East Forsyth, we helped to spread the word about suicide awareness and how it affects the community. At East, we asked students to dress up in colors that match their strength that they relate to most. We had students write their stories that they associate with their strengths, which created a large colorful Source of Strength wheel in the cafe. We had amazing student involvement and we'd like to thank everyone for participating. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Jordan and I am a senior at East Forsyth High School and a proud member of Sources of Strength. This year, in honor of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, our school hosted the Be the Light 3K and 6K Race on Saturday, September 10th. This event was not only fun, but eye-opening. We had body paint, yellow bandanas, games, a photo booth, which was really fun by the way, and food trucks. We also had a couple guest speakers, some who'd lost a loved one to suicide, who spoke before the start of the race. Of course, we couldn't do this by ourselves. We had support agencies and organizations who helped with the race and provided resources for suicide awareness and prevention. Each had a table at the event. I was so amazed at the amount of people who came to run or just hang out with their friends at our stadium. To quote one of the speakers, "This event was a great step forward to preventing and bringing awareness to suicide and suicide prevention. But we must continue to tell others about suicide and help them in finding their sources of strength." Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. My name is Ashley Cozy and I'm a school counselor at East Forsyth High School. We just implemented our second annual Signs of Suicide Prevention Program. Signs of Suicide Program educates students about the relationship between suicide and depression. We encourage all students to seek help from trusted adults, whether they have concerns about themselves or a friend, using the ACT message. ACT in particular, acknowledge, care, and tell. Acknowledge that you are seeing signs of depression or suicide in yourself or a friend that is serious. Care, let your friend know how much you care about them and that you are concerned that they need help. Tell, tell a trusted adult that you are worried about a friend. The Sources of, excuse me, the Signs of Suicide Program has shown a reduction of self-reported suicide attempts by 40 to 64% in a randomized control studies nationwide. Our next steps as a school, we had 20% of the students that participated in Signs of Suicide that did not identify a trusted adult at school. That's about out of approximately 400 individuals. Our next step is we have heard success stories of trusted adult campaigns at other schools. Our goal is to have staff members intentionally connect with these identified students. Secondly, we would like to continue to work with our community school supports. We are very fortunate to have Family Ties actually on our school campus. Last year, you will see that we had 88 Family Ties referrals and they actually have two offices located on our campus and we house two, two full-time counselors with Family Ties. This year, we have done 40, or excuse me, 20 Family Ties referrals thus far, eight of those coming out of the Signs of Suicide program. Let's see, next, we would like to talk about the Bronco Place. The Bronco Place is a physical coffee shop on our campus and it's run by the place. And I'm telling you that students see our undercover barista and they do not know that she's a social worker. And she is able to work with them in order to get their basic needs met in an indiscreet way, which we really love. Next, we would like to highlight Mentor Me, who not only partners with students in the community, but they actually come into our school building once a week and they do a connect club. Last year, we were able to work with about 300-plus students in a weekly connect meeting and their message this year that they would really like to focus on is share your story. Thank you.
In closing, just wanna thank the district for their support. It's really been a collaborative effort over many years to get this in place. Mr. Chaney's vision, East was able to open up with many whole child supports in place. One of the main goals of our East Vertical Team is to expand access to wraparound services through our Community School Center, including mental health counseling. East is able to offer free counseling services to Family Ties by the Apex Grants Grant. We're excited also to expand that to Little Mill Middle School this year, who was recently approved as well, so we're grateful for that. So, as I said, it's been a team approach, district support, community partners, school staff members, counselors, administration, school social workers, student advocacy specialists, and SROs are a support in mental health as well. All those have come together to expand access for our East community. Our community, we're thankful to have a community and family engagement coordinator, Dees Gabby-Sines. It's been instrumental in initiating our community school supports through the Whole Child Model efforts. This is my 12th year in Forsyth County Schools and I've experienced firsthand the progress we've been able to make in student support over these years. So I'm grateful, encouraged, that we've been able to remove barriers and improve access to mental health resources and strategies to support the whole child. So, there's still work to be done, but we're honored and thankful to be a part of the One East community and we'll continue to work to be better. So, thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, because I was able to hear part of the program in our last drug council meeting. You know, we deal with a lot of the same issues and the one word that stood out to me in your presentation was connect. Suicide and drug addiction are both very much an alone sport and the more we connect with the others around us and learn how to share that, I think we'll make an impact. So I appreciate what y'all are doing and I've gotta come check that barista out, I've heard a lot about that.
I've had coffee there, it's real good, it really is good.
Very good, thank you very much. And then Dr. Bearden has one more recognition.
Okay, you guys have given just a moment. Really pleased to see we have several members of our Sheriff's Department here this evening. I've said many times, our partnership with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department is second to none. We are so fortunate in our communities to have such a dedicated staff that works so closely with our school system. Earlier this year, the Forsyth County News did an article about the relationship between the Sheriff's Department and Forsyth County Schools. And one of our partners in education, George Wakefield, took the article and made it for us. And on the front is another than Lieutenant Mike Harrison, so I thought I'd present it to you tonight. So Mike, if you would come on up, I'd love to present you with it.
I'd like to, first of all, I work for the best law enforcement agency, California State of Georgia, for as far as I'm concerned. We own the nominal sheriff and command staff. I'd like to introduce some people here that are here tonight. My illustrious captain, Eric Silvius. Agent Mark Hoffman. And one of my favorite SROs, Terry. It's definitely an honor and privilege to be here and doing what I do. I couldn't think of a better opportunity than to serve my community and to protect the kids and the students and staff that's all there, so I appreciate it.
And we have in our school system now with our school resource officers, correct me, more than 50, is that right, Eric? The number is 55 that work in our school system every day and they do a tremendous job. We have an officer on each and every campus every single day. And not only this, that, and I shared this with my parent community advisory, when deputies are on patrol throughout the academic day, even if they're non-school resource officer, if they have work to do in their patrol cars, oftentimes they just pull into a campus and do it on campus just for extra visibility. So when I'm out visiting schools, it's not unusual to see two or three cruisers on a campus at any one time. Please know that's 100% intentional by Sheriff Freeman and the command staff. I just want all four of you to know how much we appreciate the work you guys do every single day. Thank you for taking such great care of our students and staff.
Alright, that's the conclusion of our recognitions. We will take a short recess if anybody would like to take this opportunity to leave and then we'll continue the rest of our meeting.
It's a bit of a big game, it's hard.
Alright. We will continue our meeting. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Ms. Morrissey? Seconded by Ms. Light, all in favor? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the presentation and discussion items with our financial report with Larry Hamel.
Good evening. You always have to follow the recognitions.
I'm sorry?
You always have to follow the recognitions.
Yes, I do. No problem with that.
Do you want us to get you a trophy or something?
No, that's okay. Just being here and seeing you is all I need.
There we go.
I love you too, man.
Tonight, we're gonna be discussing the August 2022 financial statements. As always, we keep Goal 3 in mind. We started the month off with about $99.4 million in cash, we ended the month about 80. As you can see, the cash disbursements is a little higher than it has been in the past. That's because of all the increase we had in our salaries and benefits for our last budget. The revenue is coming in at about 9.1%, this time last year, we're at 9.46, we're a little bit behind on property tax collections. That's because the bills went out a little bit late this year. On the expense side, we're about 16.95%. And last year, we're at 17.41, so we're spending a bit less than we were last year. And I think based on what I can tell, that's mostly because just of timing issues with some of the bills this time of the year. On our debt service cash analysis, a couple things to point out. We still have that $10,000 sitting in the money market fund, which we are gonna close for SPOS 5 since we are now at the end of our SPOS 5 collections and consolidated all that money into the SPOS 5 account. As you can see, we've already collected almost $20 million in SPOS 6. We are averaging about $800,000 more than we had planned at this time of the year, on average, for the first several months. I don't know if that's gonna hold true if we go into recession like we are, but it does give us a little wiggle room with that money. Currently, we have about $115 million in total. This time last year, we're about $90 million. Special revenue funds, you can see here, we spent about $4.5 million for this month. The reason there's no budget is all the budgets for federal programs have not been officially approved. We're still waiting for the state of Georgia to approve those for us going into the next fiscal year. And that doesn't officially start till October 1st anyways. Capital projects and school free services. As you can see, we started the year out with about $17.3 million in cash. We did spend about $1 million. Typically, we don't start getting our first dollar amounts until September, after school's been open for about a month. So, you'll see some revenue come in then. We're down to $16 million in cash. We were informed that there is gonna be a call, the state of Georgia, about how the school system's gonna spend that money down because it's such a large amount. And we have a three-year plan in place to make sure that we get back to the correct cash management levels that the state of Georgia and the federal government wants us to have. And I'll be working with Tim on that. On capital projects, we're about $28 million in cash. That's about what's left over from SPOS, mostly SPOS 4, and what's left over the bond money. So on the investment side, if we take a look at that, we've drawn down our ELIP funds, both for the 100, 306, and 353-53 fund. Pretty low this time of the year because we're, haven't gotten the large amount of money we usually get from property tax yet. The 306 fund, you can see, is down to $591. If you think about it, we started off with almost $170, $80 million just a couple years ago. You can see how fast we spent that money. The SPOS 4, we're down to our last $2 million on that one. That fund will be cleared out this year as well as the 306 fund. And we got the $50 million sitting there for SPOS 5. And then SPOS 6, of course, you can see the $19 million. We're gonna keep this slide up for one more month and then we're gonna take it out, but this is what we collected under SPOS 5. We collected a total of about $213 million. That was for 57, excuse me, 56 months, because we collected a quarter early on that. And here's the first four months of SPOS 6 collections. You can see the change from the previous year is 7, 7, 9, and 11. So we, like I said, we're a little bit ahead scheduled on collection right now. Elementary schools ended the month with about $4.3 million in cash. This time last year, they had about $3.9. Both receivables and disbursements are normal. Middle schools ended the month with about $2 million. Last year, they had about 1.8. And high schools ended the month up with about 5.6 and they had about exactly 5.6 this time last year. And both receipts and disbursements are normal for those schools. Ended the month, we had about almost $12 million in cash for the schools. This time last year is about 11.4. This time last year, the high schools made up about 50% of it, that's 47. Middle schools last year, about 34, it's 36. And the middle schools, excuse me, elementarys were 36. And the middle schools last year were about 16, they're at 17. So they haven't changed that much, except mostly between the elementary and high schools. And that's the financial statements for August 2022. Any questions, please?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
The next item on our list is Sex Education Curriculum Pilot with Ms. Leeann Rice, Heather Gordy, and Kayla Duncan.
Good evening.
Good evening, how is everybody? So, thank you for having us this evening and we are here to talk with you about Sex Education Pilot Program that we have been working on and putting together. Our presentation this evening aligns with Governance Goals 2 and 3. Governance Goal 2, looking at, when we're looking at Forsyth learner profile, exhibiting strong personal qualities as far as our students are concerned, and then effective and efficient financial planning. Our agenda topics tonight include current legislation related to sex education, the process that we have used to put this pilot together, and we will be talking specifics about the pilot program. So I wanna start tonight with giving you some basic information about what we are currently using for sex education in Forsyth County Schools and talking about legislation to give some reasoning about why we thought a change might be due. Since 2005, which might predate many of us, Forsyth County has been using Choosing the Best to provide the sex education to our students through the health curriculum in grades 6, 7, 8, and 9. Prior, up to last year, we, Choosing the Best was paid for using a grant and that grant required that students complete a survey and that we provide certain information that we no longer provide to a public source. And as a result, we told Choosing the Best, we're no longer gonna be able to do that. They said, "Well, if you can't do that, then you won't qualify for the grant anymore." And we decided this, it was the right time to start thinking about going in a different direction. Because anytime you're looking at creating curriculum, it takes a good deal of time. We decided to purchase the Choosing the Best program for this year's sex ed curriculum. And when you purchase the program, you do not have to provide any surveys or anything like that. So, that was the decision that we made for this year to give us time to plan for moving forward. So, legislation related to sex education and AIDS prevention falls under Georgia Code 20-2-143 and there's a link for your reading pleasure later on. The State Board of Education also outlined what this sex education program should look like. Number one that I wanna outline is it gives each local school board the autonomy to choose what sex education program they're going to use. Secondly, it has some may's and it has some shall's in the wording. So for example, "We may include instruction concerning human biology and conception, but we shall include information talking about the legal consequences of parenthood." I think one of the most important features of the law is the fact that parents can opt out, opt their children out if they so choose. And parents also have the option to come in and review the sex ed curriculum. And at this time, I'm going to ask Kayla to take over the next section that talks about the actual process for putting the pilot together.
Yes. Hi, everyone, I'm Kayla Duncan. I get to support professional learning and secondary health and PE. And so this is only applying to middle school and high school. And a big part of building this curriculum was taking the time that it needs because this is fully scripted, every detail is mapped out for all of our teachers. And we also want it to be a collaborative process. And so, the reason we really went into this is thinking about, we can design with the community in mind. That's part of the freedom that we have with the current legislation is we can design based on local community values. And so, there are some pieces with Choosing the Best we wanted to move around or include that maybe weren't incorporated but are needed now. And so, we can do that with our parent and community input with our sex ed advisory committee. We also can use resources efficiently. This year, we had to pay for it, going all virtual, we spent about $55,000. If we have workbooks, which we'll need to add for some Chromebook issues, it can go up to about $75,000. And doing our own curriculum, we can save that money because we can write it ourselves. And then it's relevant to the needs of our students today. Choosing the Best, they've updated some, but we've had it since 2005 and our students' needs today regarding health and sex education are just a bit different than what they were then. So those have all been kind of criteria for building our content. With our committee, the purpose of the committee is to give us input on what should be part of the scope and sequence and then to bring it before all of you to be able to approve for recommendation. And so, our committee is mostly non-teaching parents. I reached out to our Gadeau contact and asked what other districts have done in terms of forming that committee. And after getting her advice, we then reached out to all of our middle schools and high school principals and asked them to send us a name and that's how we were able to form that committee together. We also have some student participation and we have local community members from both mental health and pediatrics. So in our first meeting back in May, we got the group together and shared our goal for building the curriculum. We went over the legislation we just presented to you and then we gave them this document with broad categories and topics that are typically addressed in sex education. And what we asked them to do was to split into groups and discuss which of these topics are most important for 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, and high school. And using their parental view, we also had administrators and educators there. They were able to think about what might be developmentally appropriate. We then ended with a protocol where they got to highlight what should be priority. They could give us clarification statements or topics that should be included. And then we did what was called a consentogram where they had And then we did what was called a consensusgram where they had stickers, green meant they were in agreement with the topics listed, yellow, they had questions, they could put those questions on the sticky notes. And then red meant that they didn't agree. And if there was any disagreement, then we had discussion, you can see where an item was crossed off of the list. And so even if they maybe started with sixth grade, all parents were in the community, committee members were able to move around to the different parts and give their consensus for all grade levels. After we did that, we then wanted student input. The legislation says one junior and one senior. We had three juniors and one senior, two boys, two girls. And we gave an anonymous survey. We wanted them to be comfortable taking the survey. We didn't feel like maybe being in front of an entire parent group, giving their opinion, would be the most comfortable. But we wanted their input about topics to include in the format of lessons and the design of instruction. And so you can see some of the responses for what to include. And their responses were fairly consistent with what the parent committee and the educators also said. After we had all of that input, we then were able to start drafting unit plans. So the first part I want to highlight is we do have standards. You can see described short and long-term effects of engaging risky behavior. The health standards are very broad. They're not as specific as some of the other content areas. And they're more skills-based where we give nuance to the content. But we wanted to show our alignment. We then mapped out some of the assessments, how, what might be looked for, for this unit. We made connections that were relevant to our students and to help promote kind of that metacognitive thinking. And then we outlined, based on the success criteria for each day, and we provided resources. We took this then to our June parent meeting and our advisory committee, and it did another protocol where we got the levels of agreement, disagreement, and any additional feedback. Since that time, we have been in the process of building and mapping out our curriculum. We have a health team, a representative group of teachers who are helping us with that. And so that's really kind of the collaborative piece that we have really emphasized. And so now I just want to share a few logistical pieces. This is the timeline for the project. So starting back in May, March through May, we started thinking about our parent, our advisory committee, and what would this entail. We're now up to the point where we're adjusting and building based on our parent and student input. By November, we'll have our next advisory committee meeting where we'll take our drafted lessons and unit plans with all resources to the group and to our medical professionals and community partners who are helping us for feedback. In the spring, we would like to implement this with a small group of teachers who have been trained. And then they will go through, they'll collect data, they'll get student feedback on how the units are going. We'll take that back to the committee for them to be, for us to be able to adjust and for them to have input on any adjustments we need to make. Then at the end of the semester, we would like to open this up, like any resource or textbook adoption, for public review and for public input. After we have that input, and then next summer, probably June or so, we would present it all to you with our recommendation on how to move forward with sex ed. Core concepts that are addressed, you can see them on your screen. This is only a five to seven-day unit. So this is a very small portion of the health course. Health and middle school, it lasts one nine weeks. So this is one week in the nine weeks essentially. For high school, it's an entire semester, and so still, it's a very small portion of it. So we talk about these topics at varying depths depending on the age. Sixth grade and high school will have a different focus. And so for our sex education unit, again, it's five to seven days. It's completely optional. Parents have the right to preview and see everything before they sign, yes or no. It's aligned to standards and our advisory committee input. It's scripted to promote consistency and implementation. And it's based on medically accurate information. We've been able to partner with Family Haven, the Women's Clinic of Atlanta, and the Coming Women's Center. They've all agreed to give us input in making sure that we're medically accurate. And I've also reached out to CHOA's Adolescent Gynecology Unit, and they said that they'd be happy to look at our stuff, too. And I think Heather will wrap it up for us.
Okay. So we just really appreciate and hope that you can see the intentional planning and research that has gone into putting together our pilot program for sex education in Forsyth County schools. And also that you can see the inclusion of community members, which we know is a vital piece of, you know, a topic that can generate a lot of emotion. So thank you.
No, thank you. You know, I think when legislation and state agencies allow the local district to perform, Forsyth County always goes above and beyond, and it's because of you guys and their time. So thank you for that. You can also see in some, in the slide that you provided where some of the parent input had standards there, and they said, we don't want to talk about that. And you guys took it out. And so I think that just shows that this is from the community, for the community. And so, you know, and it's, it's a touchy subject, and that's why the parents have the right to opt out or opt in. But you guys have gone above and beyond, I think. And so thank you for your time.
Yeah, I actually served on the sex ed committee back in 2000 when we got, have the curriculum with Debbie Rondam. And so we went through the process, brought it to the board, and had it approved. And it did. It got in a great conversation. Everybody got very honest during the discussions that went on because this is an important topic and, you know, doing it in schools hard.
I think, you know, as a parent, it's a tough conversation to have your kids. But I think both the parents and the teachers will appreciate how well it's laid out, mapped out, and scripted for both sides because we'll know that the message will be consistent and clear throughout the schools and through the system. So I think that's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. Thank you for your time. And I've heard, you know, that, like, the intentionality, the planning, I mean, it's just been wonderful how it's just been laid out. The, the topics that were initially chosen at that May meeting, I believe it was, was that based on the Choosing the Best topics? Or what was, I guess, and the topics and the concepts?
Yes. So that was based on what's currently in Choosing the Best and what we found in other states and districts have in sex ed. So we brought a broad list for them. We also had the Choosing the Best workbooks there so they could see the current curriculum and the list of topics that are addressed just typically in sex education and use that kind of for their information to then guide the discussion.
Okay, great. And then just for clarification, so we were using Choosing the Best. And then the reason we kind of halted a little bit was because they changed their, kind of, okay, well, you can have funding through this grant, but there is a, you have to have this survey that's connected to it, and the survey was not something that you felt comfortable asking the students, or it was a little too in-depth or something.
They were, well, the, we were, it was paid for through the grant.
Right.
Last year, when we, when that information started coming out, and we had many new people in TNL working with sex ed, and there was so much going on at the system level with making sure that we're really respecting the privacy rights of our students through law, of course. We replied to Choosing the Best that we would no longer be able to administer the survey, in part because of the survey, but also because of the amount of information they were asking for us to share about the students who were in the coursework. We knew that we could still purchase Choosing the Best for the sex ed unit within the health course. That's when we started thinking, well, maybe we could do as good of a job, if not better, in putting our own course together. And at that point, Kayla got involved, and it just took off, actually.
Well, that's great. I mean, you know, you, you have to balance, right, the financial piece, and then also the, you know, privacy, right, exactly. And so I really just appreciate, you know, you taking this on. And I think, you know, of course, the easiest thing could be just, hey, we have to do the surveys. It's what it is. But I think we've heard this year that, you know, we, we don't want specific information going to another entity. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next item is our action items, and it's going to be about the School-Based Healthcare Center at Coming Elementary School with Ms. Sarah Taylor and Ms. Heidi Avila. Good evening.
I asked Heidi if I could have a white coat, but she didn't. She said I did not hold the credentials.
Oh, so you wore a gray one.
A gray, plain one.
So we are excited to share more information about the manner, the MOU between Forsyth, Forsyth School System and the Georgia Highland Medical Services, in which the board hopefully will take an active vote for a final approval this evening. So with us, we have Todd Schiffler, CEO of Georgia Highland. And then we also have Ash, Ashley Ford from our nurse practitioner from Georgia Highland that's joining us, so in case after the end, if you have any questions, they're here to help us. So Todd had approached Dr. Bearden about the possibility of a partnership after they were able to secure some federal grants, grants to start the School-Based Health Center. So Dr. Bearden pulled several of the staff members to begin the discussion and the planning process. Given the location of their, and their Title I status, Coming Elementary was the perfect school to begin this partnership. And we have Jordan Livermore. Where'd he go? Okay. Say, where you were going. Jordan Livermore and Jill Short from Coming Elementary, our leadership team. So thank you guys for being here. We also want to highlight how the School-Based Health Center supports the Forsyth County Schools Governance Goals for physical year twenty-three. So first goal we have on here is safe in, for students and staff. Keeping our students and staff healthy and addressing any medical concerns right away is ensuring their safety. And then goal number two, alignment with strategies and, initiatives and resources for the Forsyth County Learner Profile. Within the Learner Profile, we have the attributes for students to exhibit strong personal qualities that include advocating for self, others, and their community, and maintaining wellness and balance in life. And our School-Based Health, Health Center will support this part of the Learner Profile. And then lastly, efficient, effective and efficient financial planning. Having the School-Based Health Center will allow both the students and the staff to obtain immediate medical care so that they may return to school and work without delay once it's safe to do so. The Health Center will have the ability to accept individuals and family insurance. And if they're uninsured, the Health Center will have a very reasonable sliding fee scale. Now, I'm going to turn it over. Heidi Avila, our amazing health service facilitator, provide additional information.
Thank you, and good evening. So a School-Based Health Center is a partnership between a school and a, a community health organization. And they provide onsite medical and mental health services for students and staff in certainly with the goal of increasing, you know, promoting the health and academic success of our students. The state of Georgia has already established an organization called the Georgia School-Based Health Alliance to help promote and support school-based health centers across our, across our state. Currently in Georgia, there are fifty-four School-Based Health Centers. There's close to as many more in, as many in the planning stages of opening. So this is a, you know, this is not new, but I think we're going to start seeing this a lot across our counties and across our country. There's twenty-five hundred. So there's definitely a growing center for this. Talk about Georgia Highland's Medical Services. It is a private, nonprofit, community health center, which was founded in nineteen seventy-nine. So it's been in our community for several generations. They, local, they're a local medical provider, and they provide services to over five thousand children in our community. Ninety percent of them, of whom are low-income. They have grown in the last four years from one pediatric provider to four. So that growth certainly indicates the need for additional medical services for our students. Emory University and their Department of Pediatrics has been advocating for School-Based Health Centers for the past ten years and have worked on grants through the Georgia Department of Education. Georgia Highland's Medical Services has already received funding for this through the Health Resources and Services Administration and the Georgia Primary Care Association. They have already secured a nurse practitioner and a licensed clinical social worker for this clinic. Forsyth County Schools will be providing the actual physical space to accommodate the School-Based Health Center. This will, includes a secure exterior entrance and exit to the building. It'll include two exam rooms and a lobby area. The center will run independently, but it'll be housed at Coming Elementary. The health impact on our community can, can truly be significant. By providing better access to health services, we will in return have healthier students, which creates certainly an increase in our attendance rates. This will also allow our families to remain and be at work, providing them more of a financial security. We know that healthier students learn better. On a larger scale for our, for our state, this also helps reduce Medicaid costs and reduce emergency room visits. This School-Based Health Center will work in partnership with our school nurses. They can, they can be offered as a resource to our students, our staff, and our families, especially those that do not have access to a primary care physician. They can be offered same-day sick visits, well-care appointments, completion of state-required immunizations, sports physicals, completion of health forms that are required for student registration, and assistance with care plans, preventative treatment to manage chronic health conditions, again, for students that may not have access to those services. Our school community will certainly benefit from this partnership. We had the privilege of visiting an established School-Based Health Center in Chatsworth, Georgia. I've actually been up twice and viewed this clinic and while I was working with patients and to see the flow between the school and the clinic itself. Some of our administration from Coming Elementary, as well as the school nurse there, was able to visit along with us and really see that and see what a difference that they are providing for their students and their community. Any questions?
Any questions?
Todd, would you have anything you want to add? Georgia Highland's been a great partner in education through Forsyth County Schools for many, many years. A really close networking partnership. We're all here to serve children. We just think this is an opportunity to serve our children even better in the, in the Coming community. And excited about it. I do, I do recommend approval. Now, you might be wondering about when we might be able to open. We're not prepared to answer that yet. There, there are some facility issues that we're working through right now. And we want to make sure the facility is prepared. When we do open, we may even open in stages, but I will keep you posted. But I'm not prepared, I don't think you are either, to announce an opening date yet. We wanted to get formal approval. Todd already has it from his board at Georgia Highlands. Wanted to make sure I got it from our board tonight, and then we'll be able to move forward and work on the facilities part and some other logistical issues. And making sure we're addressing the issues with Jordan and his staff at Coming Elementary as well. Any questions for any of us before you vote?
I have a question. In the document, how long is the grant for, I guess? Do you know, like, the initial grant?
Both of them are startup grants.
Okay.
With the way that the model works for Georgia Highlands, if we can see a certain amount of Medicaid patients, then we can sustain it.
Okay. And then every year, it'll be revisited?
It seems like a great way to build trust, and if these, if the students and the families get into the habit of using it, it just seems like it sets a precedent of this is a lifestyle and they need to go to a doctor on a regular basis and just keep it going. It becomes a lifestyle for the rest of their lives. So.
It's about the families.
A long way. I mean, back in the late nineteen nineties, I was part of a solution to get school nurses at the schools. We didn't even have school nurses. We had to pay for a part-time nurse at Big Creek during that period and trial it. And this is where we're at today. So we've come a long way.
This is great. Thank you.
Yeah. Just from a school perspective, this is going to be a huge, huge help for us because even though Georgia Highland is fairly close to us, our parents have a very difficult time leaving work and taking their children to the doctor. And having this onsite is just going to give them access like they've never had before. And our nurse is partnering already with them and is in contact with them, and the communication has been excellent. And I think we really are going to give care to kids onsite and going to get them back in class instead of sending them home, which is just going to be a significant impact on the school as a whole. So we're very excited when we're ready to get up and running.
So the idea would be if, if the kid was sick, you would call their parent, and they could take them into the office there, and, and they could be seen by a doctor and then appropriate.
Parents are there by phone, we can do.
You have to by law.
So the parent could consent for them to be seen, and they wouldn't have to come?
We'll get consent for as many students as possible when the school year begins. And then when they actually need to be seen by the clinic, we'll get consent a second time.
I have a granddaughter that loves school nurse. This may, this may. No, but she'll just go back to class. She'll say, you're not sick.
It'll just, it could lower transition rates and just, it could just get things better off.
Jordan, you were going to say. If we could also do well visits, and that, that's our goal. Instead of a kid leaving at eleven o'clock, doing a well visit at an office, and then not returning to school, they would do their well visit at the school, thirty minutes later be back in class. And that's just more education and more academics than we're getting at that.
Parents don't have to visit.
It's a win-win.
There you go. All right.
So with that, I would recommend approval.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Every school's gonna want one, you know?
We have the need, yeah.
The next item on the list is.
Tell us to Georgia.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Points of information, are there any information?
Nothing that you haven't already received.
The only thing I'd like to do, and I apologize for not doing this beginning, is to recognize we have a young man in here that is a Boy Scout. Is that correct? If you would, just maybe introduce yourself and let us know what PAC you're part of and what badge.
Oh, I am Clint Fields. I'm part of two thirty-nine and.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much for being here today. We can have a short recess if anybody would like to leave before we start the public participation section of the night's meeting. All right, before we start tonight's public participation procedures, I would like to go over a couple of rules. All attendees shall remember that while the meetings are public, open to the public, the purpose of the meeting is to conduct the business of school system. And members of the public are invited to participate only as allowed by board policy and these following procedures. Members of the public shall conduct themselves in a respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. Each member of the public participation in public comment will be given three minutes to speak. We have a timer right here. It will be green for three minutes. It turns yellow at thirty seconds. At ten seconds, the yellow will start flashing, and when the red is on, your time is up. All speakers shall address the board by first stating their name. All remarks shall be made to the board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be made or addressed to individual board members. Speakers may bring printed or other supportive materials. These materials should be given to myself, the board chair, or the superintendent. Issues involving individual employees or individual students and pending litigation are not subject for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. The use of obscene, profane, physically threatened, or abusive remarks will not be allowed. Loud comments by speakers or members of the audience are not allowed. The board will not respond to comments made by the speaker during public participation unless a member of the board chooses to ask a question. Speaker should remain at the microphone while answering questions, if do so by the board. That is all. Our first public petition tonight is Jerk Kershaw.
Thank you, my name is Jerk Kershaw. I'd like to acknowledge the recent East Forsyth controversy. It is indeed problematic that any student or staff at our schools would ever write or speak out loud in any context the racially charged word that is never allowed. It is further problematic that our children were able to post and view videos of this, spreading this evil word over and over and over again. Every person on the internet, whoever played that video, should be very ashamed of themselves. The social media companies who hosted this hateful content should also be held accountable, and I ask the board to make sure they are blocked from school networks. Left and right, conservative and liberal, Republican and Democrat, capitalists and socialists, I'm sure that we all agree that the slang C-word for white people needs to be abolished, once and for all, from public view. And if there are any Nabisco Salteen C-word packages in any of our schools, I expect them to be thrown out or relabeled Nabisco Salteen Dry Biscuits. Moving on to things that we might not agree on. Last month, we heard from a speaker who believed that somehow removing sexually explicit books from school libraries is a violation of the rights of parents who want their kids to see sexually explicit materials at a young age. I would love to have the chance to talk with them further to better understand their position, because it is genuinely confusing to me. Maybe their point was that the one and only line of defense for children should be their parents, that nobody else should bear any responsibility for the exposure of children to indecent and explicit materials. And further, those parents who want their children to see pornography and childhood sexualization will suffer harm if we deny their six-year-olds the intellectual freedom to view porn at school. Or maybe they believe that children should be so perfectly trained by their parents before they get to school that they aren't traumatized or tempted by sexually explicit materials. And given a world where porn can spill out of any cellphone or computer with a click of a button, I suppose I can understand the importance of developing this kind of resiliency by raising our children with a strong moral foundation that understands that men and women are different, yet equally valuable, and that sexual activity is a sacred thing that should be private, monogamous, and ideally heterosexual. But even if it is important that parents protect their children and teach them to be resilient, does that really justify introducing them to sexually explicit materials at an inappropriate age? Did the speaker last month really believe that all sexually explicit materials are appropriate for all ages? I shudder to think of the kind of person who would annoyingly and willingly expose a six-year-old to the graphic details of various sexual fetishes, or even the graphic details of standard human sexual activity. Of course, it's possible that they just weren't speaking clearly, and that they too believe in the sacred values of chastity and monogamy, and also understand that what is appropriate for a sixteen-year-old might not be appropriate for a fifteen-year-old, or a six-year-old, or even an immature seventeen-year-old. Without the chance to have a long, respectful conversation together, I can only hazard a guess as to what they really meant. I am grateful that we live in a state and county that has made it a priority to protect our children from inappropriate sexual materials, and thank the board for their work to do so. And so, on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Lily Meyer. Good evening.
Good evening, and hello, everyone. As you said, my name is Lily Meyer. I've been a Forsyth County resident for over twenty-five years. I have a BA from Georgia State University, mother of two adult children, and grandmother of five grandsons. I am very glad that you've given me the opportunity to be able to speak to you today about the truth in our education system. Throughout the United States, there's a tremendous pressure to hide the truth with lies. And I will point out how Marxism has corrupted our educational system with a deceptive authority discipline. It's called critical race theory. Everyone knows about it. It's in the, it's in the, you know, militaries, and hospitals, it's in the government, it's in universities, it's in some schools throughout the country, even in elementary schools. Now, for heaven's sakes, these are children. When you were seven and eight years old, did you wanna be dealing with critical race theory? Of course not. You did not want that. I want you to know that the proponents of critical race theory at first thought that it was a bit serious, the words. So, they have given it a little bit of a twist by adding these sweet words like diversity, inclusion, and equity. Well, let's, I'm gonna give you three quick points, okay? Diversity. Yo soy cubana, y la teoría crítica racial es una mentira. I hope a lot of people know what I said. I'll tell you, Forsyth County is becoming bilingual, and I'm happy, because that's my first language. I love it. And, but I wanna tell you that the perspective I bring to you today, to your board, is like no other, or perhaps very few people have stood here before you. You see, my family and I left Havana, Cuba in nineteen sixty-one. I was twelve years old, almost. And we left a repressive Marxist government. And this government indoctrinated our schools. The government, the Marxists canceled our Cuban history books. We couldn't study history anymore, so we had to leave. And I wanna say this for sure. If you, there's no doubt that for a Marxist government to continue, you have to have, you must have indoctrination of the students. Now, we can go, I can talk to you about inclusion, but I wanna tell you just my final one. Equity is not equality. And I wanna tell you that equity is something that is going to drive this idea of critical race theory in a more serious manner. And I'll give you an analogy, a real quick analogy. So, pretend I'm a Marxist gardener, and I'm gardening.
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three minutes don't give me a lot of time.
Yep.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Krainic. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Dr. Bearden, students and staff, and community members. I'm Kathleen Krainic, and tonight, I'm honored to read a statement from a multi-level stakeholder in Forsyth County who was asked to share their concerns anonymously. With the global upheaval since the start of the pandemic, stress remains high, not just for adults, but students as well, some of whom are returning to school for in-person learning for the first time since 2020. Not only that, national daily reports of violence are seemingly interminable, making imprints of apprehension on each of us. We saw tonight the alarming data shared about depression and suicide among teenagers. But in response, what I've seen over the years is the dissolving of our schools' counseling programs. At a time when we should be bolstering our social and emotional interventions, Forsyth County Schools is intentionally moving in the direction with a focus on academic advisement. On the school's website, the counseling service's vision is empowering all students to achieve personal success. That description then goes on to explain how personal success is largely based on academics, career development, and goals planning. While these are factors in the learning journey, supportive engagement is severely lacking in this vision. The Forsyth County Guide for Collaborative Planning links the district's social-emotional learning plan to the CASL SEL framework. Their website states, "We are driven by a vision of all children and adults as self-aware, caring, responsible, engaged, and lifelong learners who work together to achieve their goals. SEL can be a powerful lever for creating caring, just, inclusive, and healthy schools that support all young people. The majority of students, teachers, and families agree SEL belongs in schools. But when it is co-opted by political agendas, students risk losing out on an education that will help them succeed in school and in life. Now is the time for brave thinkers and tireless doers to speak up for SEL. With Forsyth County Schools overtly linking our plan to these strong statements of creating politics-free, intentional supports within our schools, is it safe to assume we will see the results of these efforts? I fear the answer is negative. FCS plays the safe middle when possible, but it does not take much to knock us off the fence into the manipulative hands of those who divisively try to take the power of training, credentials, and experience from the experts in our school and onto the nightly news. Perhaps our school counselors are overworked with caseloads no superhero could manage, but I dare say they are far more limited by our lack of true vision beyond test scores, rankings, and how we look to the superficial observer. Please consider augmenting rather than diminishing the roles of our school counselors. Students can only achieve our coveted nationally competitive test scores when they are alive and healthy. That should be priority one. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Wall. Good evening.
Hello again. I'm Pat Wall. Forsyth Coalition for Education is a nonpartisan grassroots group of parents, students, teachers, and education stakeholders who've come together to help safeguard the integrity of education in our community. That is the introductory statement on our webpage. Our coalition had its beginning after eight books were removed from school libraries in January of 2022 without the benefit of following approved board policy. It was at that time that we knew someone had to speak for the parents, teachers, and students in this county who were not given a voice. We have spoken on issues ranging from diversity, equity, and inclusion, social-emotional learning, school bullying, teacher support, teacher diversity, the importance of content and context, and on the Supreme Court decision that guarantees students' First Amendment rights to read books from their school libraries that they choose. We also support parent rights to monitor what their children read, but not to determine or restrict what other parents' children read. We have been especially concerned for the continued efforts of some to restrict reading, especially targeting books by and about the LGBTQ community and people of color. We believe that all students have the right to read books about characters who represent them. We have proof that some who oppose us are still currently spreading misinformation and divisiveness. There should never be any reason for marginalized groups of children to be disrespected or devalued in any way by anyone. We don't really bring in outsiders to speak at various closed meetings, those who breeze in for a fee and then are gone the next morning. We actually talk with parents, teachers, and the community, and bring their voices to you. We have no outside funding behind us, or national PACs directing what we say. We are totally self-supporting. We stand for our teachers and students. And we are the first to acknowledge that the school system does many things right. How many other districts can claim a ninety-seven percent graduation rate? You have grown a school system that is the envy of many and is a primary reason for positive growth in this county, and have been on an upward trajectory for years, which begs the question, why are these noisy groups suddenly wanting to tear it down? It makes one wonder, what exactly is their agenda? And what about diversity training? After all, fifty-one percent of our students are non-white and represent a hundred and twenty-nine countries. How can diversity training not be a priority? We will always express our concerns where we feel it's needed to help you make the district even better, as well as speak up to acknowledge a positive. What we won't do is call you names, yell hysterically, or be disrespectful in any way. We believe that is counterproductive and, quite frankly, childish. So, now you know that we are the Forsyth Coalition for Education, we will be transparent with you and expect the same in return. A great school system can only get better when there is positive and productive community input.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Our next speaker is Becky Wimmer. Hello.
Hey, y'all. I'm Becky Wimmer. Thanks for having me. I'm a Forsyth parent. I have a sophomore son at Lambert. I was gonna bring him with me, but he has homework tonight. As we've heard already tonight, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'm sure there's not a person in this room who hasn't been impacted by the suicide of someone they know or someone close to them. It may surprise you that suicide is now the second-leading cause of death among children aged ten to fourteen. Ten to fourteen, suicide. You don't have to be a social scientist to wonder if the global pandemic and the ensuing social isolation and uncertainty have played a role in this crisis. These times are hard on families. Parents may be overwhelmed. The school may be the only place a child hears a kind and calm word that day. Schools can and must be safe places, even for difficult topics, places that foster conversations about issues that affect our students' mental wellness. So, when I heard that the book Thirteen Reasons Why by Jay Asher is on the brink of being challenged in one of our district schools, I wanted to speak on its behalf. Thirteen Reasons Why was one of the American Library Association's best books for young adults, and it deserves a place on our school shelves. The story follows a teenager, Clay, who struggles to understand the reasons that Hannah, his classmate and crush, chose to end her own life. He's guided by audio cassettes that Hannah herself made, telling her own story, and describing a series of petty and not-so-petty cruelties that she suffered or witnessed. Now, I have not seen the Netflix series based on this book. I understand that it may be more sensationalized or extreme, but if the book is being challenged for vulgarity, that is nonsensical to me. In one scene, an unconscious girl is raped, but it is merely told to us and not described in graphic or explicit terms at all. That crime, and Hannah's inability to have intervened in it, is one of the burdens that weigh her down in the story. But the book is a gripping demonstration of how everyone's actions have ripple effects. We may not understand the way we impact each other's lives, all the little butterfly-wing changes that a person can make in their social world, for good or ill. The lesson, to go through life with empathy and a generous spirit, because people around us may be struggling with issues we can't see, seems to me to be very timely for students today who are caught somewhere between getting over a pandemic, coming of age on social media, facing a world that we never had any idea of. Every now and then, in the recent heated discourse that swirled around education, someone says they want schools to, quote, "Just teach reading and math," unquote. Not feelings, not emotional skills, just the facts, as though that's so easy, right? But schools have never, never, in our history, been only for the transmission of knowledge that could be printed in a book. And the more we stand by while books are targeted, while teachers are interrogated by people with political axes to grind, while school counselors are mistrusted, we erode the school's ability to care for the whole child at any age, whether the difficult conversation is about sharing crayons, or grief and loss, or race and sexual identity. Please protect our school's role as a place where even controversial issues can be explored, and students feel safe, connected, and thriving.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cynthia Miskerman. Cindy Martin. John Bivins.
Good evening.
Yeah. John Bivins. As the Board of Education, you're responsible for a myriad of objectives. We in the public applaud your successes from building new schools to hiring teachers for the system. But while these are real issues, they are so broad as to obscure. Some of the smaller activities would actually affect the students more directly and are usually left to the teachers and principals to problem-solve. Recently, a headline appeared in the front page of the Forsyth County News, which stated as a fact that the use of a racial slur by the East Forsyth County High School principal angered some parents. As a consequence, the principal had thrown in. As a consequence, the principal had thrown himself under the bus and asked for a leave of absence. The following article describes a meeting between a young white student, the principal, and two high school staff members. Apparently, the student had been using the word "cracker" to describe white students, and the principal wanted to teach this individual why it was wrong. The meeting centered around the word "cracker." The student had not been using the N-word. The student, as quoted, is asking why "cracker" is so bad. The principal goes into educational mood. To do this, the principal compared the use of the word "cracker" to the actual N-word, not the abbreviation N-word, but the actual N-word. The two words were used as examples for the purpose of educating the young man. We have the video of the meeting so we can hear the text and the atmosphere of the conversation. The principal was just a teacher, doing his best to make a point by using two best examples. There was no malice or demeaning motive behind its use. In fact, the principal stated that whites would be offended by the word "cracker," and just the same way blacks would resent the use of the actual N-word. The paper said the principal recognized his mistake in using the full N-word, but keep in mind, this was a private meeting and was strictly for educational purposes. The meeting was not supposed to be taped and made public. I am asking you to imagine why the principal reacted as guilty of some wrongdoing when there was no valid reason. Had the principal been oversensitized by hearing the actual N-word? Was he concerned that outside forces would blame him for his use regardless of the truly innocent intent of the meeting? Just think about it. There's been created an atmosphere of fear over the use of a single word, in spite of the fact that it was being used as an innocent educational tool. One or two parents in a newspaper have been allowed to accuse a well-meaning educator of being guilty of racism and hate speech. Did any of you happen to pick up a phone and call each other to discuss this issue? Maybe defend the purpose of the meeting and the principal? You should immediately apologize to him and reinstate him. If you don't, his reputation and life is ruined. It's up to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then our last speaker is Shivie Mehta. Is she here? She usually hides behind the screen. Okay, very good. All right, that concludes our public participation tonight. Thank you very much for your comments. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Light. Second by Mr. Cleveland.